Oh, we're not doing the pledge? All right, I'd like to call to order this public hearing for the St. Mary's County Board of Education on the 2021, no, 2022 budget, rushing a year. So we will begin with the superintendent's report, who had alerted us last week that he was going to give an update on school opening.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. Let me share the screen. No, that's not the right one. Let me share the right screen. Stop share. Share the screen. Here we go. All right. So really, this is going to be a fairly short, little bit of an update. For those who were not paying attention yesterday, listening to the news, or on Twitter, or Facebook, Governor Hogan gave a press update to talk specifically about how the state of Maryland was doing relative to vaccination. It was a very informative, I think, very good overview of exactly where we are. It started with a shout out for five counties whose health departments had done an exceptional job of deploying all the vaccine that was made available to them. And if you'll notice, there's a little, there's a little blue arrow right there for St. Mary's County. Ninety-three point five percent of the vaccine that we have received, we have distributed. It has gone into the arms of our, of our community members. And it's actually, I think, a little bit higher until yesterday, because as of yesterday, we received another shipment of vaccine, a very large shipment of Pfizer vaccine. So we got a shout out for doing such a good job, for deploying the resources that have been provided to us. A lot of that goes to the incredibly cooperative, constructive partnering that the health department, the county government, supporting partners in St. Mary's County Public Schools have all done together. He talked a little bit, Governor Hogan talked about the priority group and the way that the vaccine is being distributed. And in the first few months, as we have all been told, there will be a limited supply of the vaccine. And so that first phased group one, group one has been broken into three different categories, 1A, 1B, 1C. We are currently in the 1A deployment of vaccine. And when I say "we," I mean the Maryland, the state of Maryland is in 1A. And this is the slide from his presentation yesterday. This is not my slide. This is his slide. This is, this represents all of the state of Maryland. Maryland is in phase one, which means frontline hospital workers, healthcare, nursing home residents, law enforcement, firefighters, EMS, all licensed, registered, and certified healthcare providers, correctional healthcare staff and officers, and frontline judiciary staff, representing about a, about a half million people in the state of Maryland. That is phase 1A. In St. Mary's County, in our, in my discussions with and collaboration with Dr. Brewster, we have gone through almost all of the people in 1A in St. Mary's County, with the exception of nursing home residents and staff. And that's, the local health department isn't doing that. That's CVS, Walgreens, it's a corporate partnership. They're the ones that are covering the vaccination in those congregate care centers. Everybody else, everybody that should be covered in St. Mary's County by the health department, pretty much, we've completed, they've completed the vaccination of those groups. So Governor Hogan has talked about the importance of rolling out the vaccine as we get it, deploying it. So, rolling distribution, he's not going to wait to get all members in one priority group before moving on to the next in line, and recognizing that if you didn't meet, if you weren't able to meet your window, you could come back and we'll catch you up later in later phases. Why is that important? Because when we go into phase B, the state of Maryland moves into phase B vaccination, that now includes quite explicitly education, K-12 public education, as well as daycare faculty and staff for the state of Maryland, as well as those in assisted living, group homes, congregate facilities, and all adults ages 75 and up. We hope that we will be able to move into 1B shortly. Like, perhaps even, we're ready in St. Mary's County, perhaps even move into 1B this week. We've completed the 1A vaccinations, and we have vaccine enough to move into 1B, which means that we can be moving into the explicit planning for and delivery of vaccine for county, for St. Mary's County Public School staff. How we will do that, because again, the number that comes and when it's going to be and what it might be like, we're going to follow the same phasing that we have for the return to school. So if we bring back kids in a phased way, we would then vaccinate staff related to that phased in grouping in very much the same fashion. That way, we don't have 2,400 people all rushing to be vaccinated at once. By doing a phased in approach, that also guarantees that, once we get the, the staff vaccinated and all that in place, there, we'll, we'll be, we'll be in school. We won't have to go back and forth and be, the staff will have been vaccinated. What that looks like is, so we've been gathering information on the exact staff that are related to phase one, phase two, phase three, and then everybody else in the system, and getting the exact number of people who would need to be vaccinated. So, right now, by our estimates and working with the school-based staff and our supervisors, there's about 900 people who need to be vaccinated to help coordinate phase one, the bringing back of specialized programs, sail and compass. Phase two, that large group that's Head Start, Pre-K, K, grade one, grade six, grade nine, grade 12, as well as all the specialized programs, that's about another 1,200 staff members. And then phase three, the final phase, where we'd have all of our people back in our buildings, all the kids back, and the opportunity to be in hybrid instruction, that's another 544 staff members. On top of that, there's another 300 employees who don't directly work in schools or with children every single day, and they would be the last group to be vaccinated. So what that would look like, and everybody wants a timeline, we want to know when. I don't have, there's, all these dates in here are to be determined. So depending upon when the governor allows local counties to move into 1B vaccination phase, and we have available vaccine, then this is how we group them out. So, phase one students, sail, compass, specialized programs, group one staff, 876 staff members, that includes, to include, there's also some others, but to include, all the phase one teachers, all the phase one support staff in the school, and that could be instructional pair educators, that could be secretarial staff that, that works with them, it could be building service staff that's specifically deployed for that particular thing. It's all the support staff within the buildings relative to sail and compass. All the phase one administrators, so all the administrators in the buildings where they're overseeing a sail or compass program. Coaches, because we want to move forward with extracurricular after-school engagement activities for children. All nurses, we've already done some nurses, the nurses who are going to be responsible for vaccination, as well as any nurse who wanted it, they were included in phase 1A. All bus drivers, because some of them are going to be just special ed routes, but once we start, we might as well go and get all bus drivers. And all food service, because all food service has been tip of the spear throughout this entire time. Truly, the frontline of frontline workers, they have been in schools without exception since the third week of March last year. So, once we have that group identified, we have an allowance from the governor to move forward into phase B, we have enough vaccine, so we have over 1,000, about 1,000 doses of vaccine, we would then deploy that on a two-day vaccination clinic, because they can easily do 500 vaccinations a day with the current setup that they have at the Hollywood Volunteer Fire Department. We've also worked with county government and the health department to put forth a plan to do Great Mills Parking Lot, very similarly, where we could administer 500 doses of vaccine at Great Mills High School. So it just depends on the timeline, when and where. After they've been vaccinated, you have to give them 10 to 14 days for the pure, for the greatest efficacy and the absorption of, and the, whatever. After that, we'd be able to open school for phase one kids. We'd be able to bring back special programs, and everybody working with kids in special programs would have the greatest level of safety that we can provide, not perfect, not 100%, but the greatest level of safety that we'd be able to provide, phase one. Phase two, that's the, that's thousands of children. That's all kids in Head Start and Pre-K and kindergarten, and one, and six, and nine, and 12. That's 2,000 staff members, that's all of the phase two teachers, that's all the phase two support staff, that's all administrators in every one of the schools, because all the kids are back, that's all the counselors, that's all the psychologists, that's all the social workers, that all, that's all the PPWs, that's all the safety and security, that's all the office staff, that's pretty much everybody in the buildings, with the exception of the people who won't have kids until phase three. Again, we think we can do it in two days, two days of clinics, probably a Friday and a Saturday. Wait 10 to 14 days, phase two kids could be back for in-person hybrid instruction. Phase three is everybody else, so by the time we get to phase three, that's every kid, basically Head Start through grade 12, all of our programs, all of our things, that's another 544 staff members. We think we can do that in a one-day clinic. And that one-day clinic, then we'd be able to, 10 to 14 days later, be able to open up for phase three. The last group would be group four, that would be the last day. We'd again, put out a Friday, a specific day for the vaccination clinic, and we'd have more than enough spaces. So anybody we might have missed, we'd be good to go. So really, realistically, we need like six days. And in six days, given the, first of all, the authorization to move into 1B, and the availability of vaccine, in six days, we could have every staff member in St. Mary's County Public Schools who voluntarily wanted to be vaccinated, vaccinated, and we could have our buildings open to every one of our kids to be, to resume hybrid in-person instruction. When that happens, we would not step away from anything that we're currently doing, so there'd still be hand washing and hand sanitizer and face covering and all the PPE that we've already invested in shields and gloves. There'd be all the physicals, the physical distancing, we'd be in the hybrid instruction, so you'd only have half the students, and really about 40% of the students on any given day. We would follow all of the cleaning protocols we have been following, and we, of course, would continue training and learning as we brought kids back to schools. So, I think that we're really close, and the St. Mary's County Health Department and the St. Mary's County Government and related entities in the sheriff's office and EMS and EMT, we've, everybody has really done a great deal of planning. So all we need now is the authorization to go to 1B, and then the supply of vaccine. And we are, we are ahead of others in that Dr. Brewster, several months ago, ordered the freezers so that we can accommodate the Pfizer vaccine. The first group that we got was Moderna, this group that we're getting, we got yesterday, was Pfizer. If the, if they are actually able to ramp up and deliver what has been delivered to the state, we could have all of our staff vaccinated by the end of this month, and in February, we could be back to in-person instruction, and we could be resuming some sense of normalcy for our kids. Dr. Brewster is not going to join us tonight, but she is, will absolutely make herself available next Wednesday, when we have a board meeting, and hopefully, when we come to have the board meeting next week, we'll be able to give you like, here are the exact days of the vaccination clinics, here are the exact people who will be eligible and opportunity to be vaccinated, and here are the exact then dates that follow that open us up, phase one, phase two, phase three. We are definitely getting closer to the light. And I do believe that by the time we get into mid-February, we really should be able to be providing in-person services to our kids. Dr. Brewster gave a really comprehensive update yet on the 5th.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, oh my gosh, that's just yesterday.
Yes.
On the 5th, to the, to the county commissioners. That's the YouTube video for it, you can just go to StMarysMaryland.com and go through it and take a look at it. It's about a, it's about an hour-long briefing on all the information about the plans and the protocols and the deployment, and where we are as a county, and where we can be, as long as we have the go-ahead to move into 1B and continue to, to receive the supplies that we, that we need. So, I wish I had some really, I could give you the exact dates and where we're all going to be and all of that. This is as close as we can get. There is an incredible amount of fluidity right now, as far as, you know, where we are. Everybody just needs to know that we're completely committed to, first of all, getting our staff the opportunity to voluntarily be vaccinated, and then following that to get our schools open for in-person instruction. And we've, I mean, we're close. We're really, really close. And we have the mechanisms in this county, we have the plans and the protocols to be able to do that. So, a positive thing, I realize that there are many people that want us to do this right now, but I didn't even add all the data, I didn't say where our positivity rate is and our case rate per 100,000, and the fact that we had more cases last week than we've ever had, that we had 17 cases of employees last week while we weren't in school. There's a lot of, you know, there's the community spread. So, we're focusing right now on vaccinating, and vaccinating, and vaccinating. And I think that, I think we're going to be in good stead as a result of it. So I did want to provide that update for anybody who might be, who's not watching the news tonight, because there's nothing on the news. That's, that's, that's all of that. Tammy McCourt is on, and she'll turn on her video, yes she will. I'm going to pull up the PowerPoint for, let me screen share it.
While you're doing that, the only other point is, the reason that the vaccine clinics are scheduled for the end of the week is because the shipments aren't received by the county until Tuesday.
Right.
You are notified on Saturday what you're going to get.
Of what your total is going to be.
And what type of vaccine it's going to be.
Yes.
And apparently, we are well-positioned, because we have the, the deep cold freezer, so we can accept the Pfizer ca, or vaccine.
Yep.
Where some cannot.
Yep.
And then that's why all of the vaccine clinic, clinics are, you know, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, because they don't know how many they're going to get. So there's no point in calling people in if, you know, their numbers are different.
The, the coordination of the scheduling of that.
Is incredible.
Is really incredible, because you have to, you have to line up all your people before you pull out your vaccine, and you can't, like afterwards, oh, we're all done with this, this will stay for, it's not. You have to, you know, it's, um, so.
Right.
We're, the county's in, the county's in really good shape for that. So, with that, Ms. McCourt will kind of walk us through a couple of slides, just to give us a preview, a little bit of the budget, and then we will move to public hearing. So with that, Ms. McCourt.
So tonight, it provides an opportunity for you to receive public comment on your proposed fiscal year 2022 budget, which is for the month of December deliberating. This budget is presented as balanced. It includes a request to the county government of local funding increase from 109.5 million dollars to an increase of 118.5 million dollars or 9 million dollars of recurring costs. It also includes a requested use of county fund balance in the amount of 1.9 million dollars for non-recurring costs. And as we closed last year's fiscal year, we put all available funds back to immediate use in the current fiscal year's budget. Therefore, there are no savings currently available in the school district's books to support non-recurring items in next year's budget. A decrease in state revenues reflects the significant decline in student enrollment and the existing state funding formula, which provides funding to school districts on a per pupil allocation. We haven't yet received the preliminary state aid numbers, but I was informed just yesterday by MSD that we should expect to receive them later than the end of this month. A slight decline in the federal revenue mirrors our actual impact aid amount received last year, and the decrease that you see on the slide in other revenues reflects the decline in interest income that we've been currently experiencing. Overall, this proposed budget reflects an increase of 2 million dollars or 0.87% over the FY '21 adopted budget. This budget includes the contractually obligated negotiated step and COLA increase for our ISMAC and ISMAC ESP staff. Funding has been included for the SMAS negotiations that are currently underway. And for our bus contractors, this budget includes a core vehicle allocation or PDA bus increase, and it also includes an increase in our hourly rate of pay for the contracted bus drivers and attendants equivalent to that provided for our ESPs. There are no new initiatives, there are no new positions included in the budget. Additionally, there were departmental budget cuts that were put forth by the directors to assist in balancing the budget with such a nominal increase. For the use of fund balance, we've included IT upgrades to include CTE, digital textbook license renewals, the replacement vehicles, and the building modifications, and those items total the 1.9 million dollars that we reflected on the revenue slide. And finally, for the important date, the next, at next week's meeting, we'll have your final work session, and on January 27th, your final budget approval. So at this point, I'll turn it back over to the board members for, to receive public comment.
Okay.
Wonderful. Do we have?
Do we have?
Mr. Trump.
So I will, I'm not going to read my whole statement, because it does not apply to the budget. However, just know that you do have three minutes to speak. Kim will time you, and if you want to provide any written comments, you can give them to her, and then she scans, and we keep everything on a, on a Google Drive file.
Also, though, I am the president of the St. Mary's County Bus Contractors Association, and was on the impression that I may be getting more time.
Then you have five minutes. See, I know that.
Representing the group, you have five minutes.
There you go. So now, you have extra 120 seconds.
Okay, great. Again, my name is Joseph Goldsboro. I am the St. Mary's County Bus, President of the Bus Contractors Association. My address is 23250 Lending Court, Lexington Park, Maryland. And I'm here to speak for representing the contractors of St. Mary's County. We like to address for the next year's budget. We have four concerns that we would like for you to take in consideration. As we met to prepare for this year's budget at the request of Jeff Thompson, Director of Transportation, we were instantly told by Mr. Thompson that part of the department's budget will be cut by 10%. So basically, don't expect much of an increase at all. Now, I just did hear that we are getting a bit of an increase for the PVA and the drivers, which is much appreciated. But due to the rise in the minimum wage, our drivers, who are required to carry a professional license and attend training sessions, fought for a reasonable salary increase last year. Our drivers receive a minimum of five and a half hours a day. Are they doing that right now? Uh, no, but that's really at no fault of their own. Every driver is actually waiting to call, a call to return to work, because they are in desperate need of money. At the five and a half hours a day of minimum pay, our drivers are making less than 20,000 dollars a year. That is poverty level. Even with the increase in the salary, our drivers are still remaining at a poverty level. Additionally, these drivers are actually on call every minute that the schools are in session. If a school's heat goes out, or they lose power, or water pipe bursts, or inclement weather, the bus drivers must immediately report to the school and transport the students home, including all of the scheduled two-hour dismissals also. Drivers do not get an on-call pay and make it impossible to get a second job during the school year. Our next issue or concern is our bus maintenance. There was a day when the contractors could do most of the routine maintenance on their buses. This is no longer the case. Today's buses, with their electronics, their emission controls and like, are beyond the capabilities of most of us contractors. Most contractors are at the mercy of professional mechanics, and their alley shop rates are in excess of 100 dollars an hour. Your average economy car can perform well on regular oil changes, fluids, and belt checks. School buses, at a cost of about 110,000 dollars per bus, maintenance are often in the shop and require computerized diagnostics, work before the maintenance or repair can even be done. In the current proposed budget, we are receiving no maintenance increase. Our buses are expected to pass Maryland state inspections, St. Mary's County Public Schools inspections, but we are receiving no increase in the maintenance fees to provide a safe mode of transportation for our students. Labor rates have gone up, parts have gone up, and our maintenance wages have not. This now becomes a safety issue. Our maintenance rate is 88 cents a mile, as compared to our sister counties of 98 cents and 96 cents. Not understanding why, and I don't like to compare to sister counties, but we're not quite understanding why our maintenance is so much different when we are driving the same buses. And my understanding is, as I was just told, is that we are actually transporting more students than one of our sister counties. As an example, for myself, we are required to have the diesel exhaust fluid, or DEF, as part of the emission requirement. Each of these buses have two filters to be replaced, one at 600 dollars a filter, and the other at 4,000 dollars a filter, which I had to replace just this year. These repairs are not considered major. A major repair, like a motor, is at a minimum of about 20,000 dollars. Now, the contractors' profits are nonexistent. How are we supposed to operate and maintain with this? Our next issue was the operations. The contractors receive a fixed rate on top of an hourly wage to pay the Social Security, federal, state, and unemployment. Our fixed rates has been 25% for years. Our tax rates have continued to increase every year, but we haven't received an increase to make this part of our business. Our fixed rate is 4,944 dollars. The next is the fuel rate. Now, we get 7.25 miles per gallon. The newer and smaller buses probably may do get this. However, the larger buses and older buses are not getting nearly this. They're about five to six miles a gallon. We, also, we have to pay the fuel tax. We, also, we have to pay the fuel tax. Now, we do get that back at the end of the year, but we have to fill out multiple paperwork, make copies of everything, and send that in, and God forbid if we do make a mistake on it or something. I know that's not really in y'all's area, but I just wanted to point that out to you. In conclusion, our contract companies are charged with one of the most important jobs in the school system, to transport 50 to 60 of someone else's children to and from school safely and on time through these congested and hard-to-travel roads while disciplining children in a contained area. Contractors and their drivers bear significant responsibilities in this work. Our contractors, drivers, and attendants are held to a higher standard than any of the personnel in the educational system, with having to have certifications, CDLs, physicals, and drug testing. Our drivers are living in poverty level, and our contractors are making almost zero profit. Within some bad years, we're actually going in the hole. We all see the educational personnel getting promotions, raises, fleets of cars expanding, and hundreds of thousands of dollars being spent on tablets and software for all of our buses, while our drivers are living in poverty and our contractors are pretty much working for free. We realize you only see the big picture, but we would be honored to sit with you, to show you breakdowns of what our costs are, and so that you may see what our predicament really is. And I was going to also ask, but you also mentioned in here, that we wanted to ask for the drivers to be put on the essential list, but you are doing that, and I want to thank you all for that, too.
Absolutely.
Thank you for giving me this time.
Thank you. Kim, is there anyone else?
Yeah, Elizabeth.
All right. So we still have public comment, so any public comment and any other issues. Okay. All right. Then our next board meeting, as Tammy had mentioned, will be next Wednesday, the 13th of January at 9:00 AM. And we will have a budget work session during that, or after the completion of that meeting. So that's all. We are out. Done.